Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to tonight's regular board meeting of May 16, 2023. It is 5:30 in the call this meeting to order. We'll do roll call first. Ramiro Moreno. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Kurtoszo Gomez.
Present.
Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Teresa Servion.
Present.
Steven Weller.
Present.
And I'm here. We do have a quorum. First side will be 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Oscar.
Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance from Hannah Jolie Galarza is a seventh grader, year-old daughter of Joseph and Julie Galarza. She's currently a second grade student at Sullivan Elementary Science Academy. She's a GT student on the A Honorable List and also an active member of her school's 4-H Club. Her favorite subjects include reading and science. This past March, she participated in a 2023 and III Rio Grande Valley Life Suck Show, where she placed fourth in her Western Artwork entry and second with her Photography entry. She also enjoys gardening, painting, drawing, and dancing. Hannah has been described by her teacher to be kind, passionate, and thoughtful. On her spare time, she enjoys time with her family, going to the movies, traveling, and playing games. Hannah would be to love to be an artist when she grows up. Leading us in the invocation, also from Sullivan Environmental Science Academy is Gavin Mesa. Gavin Mesa is a third grade student at Sullivan Elementary Environmental Science Academy and is 10 years old. Gavin is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Jose Mesa. He loves airplanes and dreams of becoming an airline pilot. He enjoys traveling and going on adventures with his family. His favorite trip thus far has been to Italy. Gavin is an honor student. He's a guest host of CESA TV and is a member of the Osear Crew, where he allows for the real-time movement of his favorite shark. Gavin is also a member of the nationally-recognized CESA recycling team. Gavin has not only gotten his immediate family, but also his aunts and uncles involved in recycling. Gavin has a new puppy named Millie that he enjoys spending much time as possible with. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my protective flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let us bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the goodness of all this school year. We ask for your blessings and guidance upon the administrators to make good decisions for the schools and the community. As the school year comes to end, we pray that you keep the students, their families, and all the staff safe. May you give us rest so when the new school year starts again, we are renewed and refreshed. Amen.
We have a certificate for you on behalf of the School Board of Trustees. If you want to come up. Will the parents of these fine students please stand up and be recognized at this time? Principal Diana Atkinson, thank you.
Next time we go to special recognition, Ms. Servion.
Yes, sir. So we have Ms. Gonzalez here tonight that will actually walk us through our recognitions, highlighting all of our students that have done such an awesome job. Ms. Gonzalez?
Ms. Servion. Tonight we are going to honor a part of the many of our students that have gotten all sorts of medals, awards, recognition, so much to be proud of. This evening, we're going to begin with our CTE program. Some of our kids have made district, state, national, they have their accolades. Ms. Servion is going to present them. And we will also be recognizing the EFA students that fared really well at the Rio Grande Valley Life Suck Show, our champion, our salesperson champion. So I'm going to ask Ms. Servion to come over and do that.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Members of board, Ms. Servion, good to be here tonight. We get to celebrate, you know, best part of my job is to celebrate the best of the best. So we're going to start off right away. These kids, we're going to talk about our Skills USA. They're called Skills USA District Community Leadership Skills. They went to a conference, and they went on to Corpus Christi and competed at the state level. Now, all these kids all qualified for state. Okay, so as we, you know, as I go through, they'd be the one, first, or second at the district level, and some of them actually placed up at the state and some of them at the national level. So we're going to start right away. I want to ask the team. This is going to be our Information Technology. We will start with Victor Loia. Victor Loia, best state in networking. He got first place, gold medal in district, mature. All right. I'm going to go Marcos Osiberos. Alberto Naranjo. Jaime Mendez. Lex Bailey. Gabriel Garay. And our instructor, Alberto Perez. Perez, come on over, Perez. All right, he's got the next one. All right. Cecilia Villana Morones. Perfect. There's a little ring, I think it got to a few of us. Come on in. Christopher Sanchez. And Maxwell Lava. Let's have also our teacher, Alberto Perez, Information Technology. Again, they advanced to state level for computer program. If the parent is here for this young lady, go ahead and stand up, be recognized. Thank you so much. Again, one of our state qualifiers, one of many information technology. All right, one thing I had to explain about Skills USA. Skills USA is a different groups that are going to compete. Okay, so we've got everything from AP technology to construction, to uniting, towards quite a few kids that went to Corpus Christi. So the first next one is here, Leslie Meza. Under Photography Skills. All right, so we have Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul Hammond is the next one on the list. Okay. So, these representing, Leslie Meza group got second place, silver medal, and then at state got an excellent award, second place as well. Mr. Paul Hammond representing our graphic design and multimedia arts. We can get a picture of him. All right. Congratulations, Paul, thank you. Up next will be our construction group. We're going to start with Luzenana Juárez, news coming up. Second place, silver medal. Believe it or not, this young lady can lay some bricks. She competed against some of the best, and they were looking at her like, oh, this girl can lay some bricks. So she did a great job. Joslyn Armita, second place, silver medal. Evan Sanchez, first place, gold medal. Arturo Juniors, second place, silver medal. Aaron Garcia, second place, silver medal. Ariana Lagarta, first place, gold medal in carpentry. Maricena Chiu. Aruna Rodriguez, first place, gold medal. Aruna Rodriguez also made third place bronze medal at the state. Christopher Gonzalez, district, first place, gold medal. Christopher also part of the team that got in third place, got a bronze medal at state. Juan Fuentes, first place, gold medal. Juan Fuentes makes that second group, there a third place bronze medal. Let me say a little bit about this group here. This is the first time in the history of San Benito anybody places in the top, the top three at the state level in construction. Great job, guys. Now, the man that happens, the man that all that happens, Tandiro Barales, come on over, sir. We don't want to forget you. Is he here? Come on over. That's not Tandiro. Oh, okay. Sergio Juniors, I'm sorry, Sergio, I didn't mean you here. I actually had a third place. Sergio also part of the bronze medal team at the state level. I'll tell you what, it was nice to see them up there, and thousands of kids. Man, I sat and watched them for about an hour. I don't know, you know, there was nothing there, and then I think like a few hours later, there was half a shed already built. So these guys can build some stuff. Great job, Mr. Barales. Awesome job. Thank you so much. Will the parents, parents, please stand up and be recognized. All right, so now, I have a pledge of moving these kids. I was in Uber for that week because they were in a different location. All right, soon as they sit down, we can get a picture, and we'll have the board right behind them. Awesome job. Great job, everybody. The next group, part of our Arts and Communications. Mr. Fisher Hill will be sponsoring this. Will be Hannah Tanelle, who had first place in Photography Project. Hannah Tanelle also got first place in the district. Jake Perez got first place in Photography Project as well, also second place in Photography. We submitted a couple of projects with that. David Camenz, district, first place, gold medal. Terminology advanced to state also as well. And Solani Hassel, first place in Jazz Skills. And Sergio Naranjo, okay, Officer nominee, this is 13, Officer Lex. All right, so one of our, one of our middle students that will be representing San Benito across the valley in our district. Of course, Fisher Hill, her, come on over. We're not going to forget about her. All right, our sponsors today, great job. For the parents of this young man, please stand up and be recognized. Three state qualifiers at Corpus Christi. Next group will be part of Culinary Arts. All right, we're going to start with Rolando Carranza, second place, Culinary Arts. And first place, Venez Alazar, first place, Commercial Baking. Crystal Lugo, second place, Commercial Baking. Randy Sanchez, first place, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. Alexander Martinez, first place, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. Aaron Castaneda, first place, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. Crystal Lugo, first place, Culinary Arts, and the Quiz Bowl as well. Rolando Carranza, first, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. Darren Sanchez, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. This is a whole team. So Julian Montes, first place, Culinary Arts Quiz Bowl. And of course, our instructor, Juanito Garcia. I'll tell you what, they did an awesome job. You know, annoying the city here and its existence as far as Culinary Arts, we're already making some noise just to say they have a great job, guys. Will the parents of these young men and women, please stand up and be recognized. This is a group of eleven corporate. And we've got a group of ninth graders coming up right behind us. Thank you all so much, congratulations. All right, in continuation, our state qualifiers coming out of our Cosmetology, okay? Janice Arata, district, first place, Grading Extension Project. Crystal Contreras, first place, Grading as well, Extension Project. Cynthia Castillo, district, first place, Medicine Design Cut Project. My Dana Chitón, second place, Women's Edge Cut and Color Project. Emma Alfaro, district, first place, Grading Extension Project. Serena Peregrino, district, first place, Fantasy Project. Alejandro Sandoval, district, first place, Grading Extension Project. Alisa Alvarado, district, first place, Fantasy Project. And Rején Morales, district, first place, Medicine Cut, Medicine Design and Cut Project. And the instructor, Ms. Sylvia Wall, our Cosmetology instructor, come on over. And we'll get a picture. Will the parents of these young ladies, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you all so much. All right. A little tidbit about this next group, this part of our Digital Communications. Instructor is going to be Mr. Jose Ramos. These are all tenth graders, advanced to the state. Let me see, he's got these guys for another two years. So, here you go. Bella Kiwal, district, first place, Photography Project. Ms. Kiwal also won State Superior Award, first place. Jasmenara, district, first place, and also a state first place award. Isai Maquines, district, first place, as well as Division One, Superior rating at the state level. All right. Roménez Anfederal, first place at district and also first place at state. Serena Torres, first place at district, again, Division One at state level. Jolín Varela, first place in district, also qualified as state as a first place. And of course, our instructor, Jose Ramos, Digital Communications. Again, all of these are tenth graders, they'll be back in the next couple of years. Oh, I got one more sheet. All right. Eduardo Olínez, first place in district. Estella Andrade, also first place and first place award at state. Delina López, first place in district and also first division. Now, we have Jose Ramos come on over. All right, thank you, Jose. Will the parents of these young ladies and gentlemen, please stand up and be recognized. All right, great job. Thank you all so much. Continuing with our audio video production and our audio video production area, Digital Communications, instructor Joel Olínez, I'm going to bring up Hannah Benavides, gold medal. Showcase, AP Career Qualifier, also part of the team, and while second place in state, silver medal at state. Hassel Madera, Jennifer Uten, and again, gold medal at the district, AP Career Qualifier Showcase. John Paul Gonzalez, also gold medal, AP Career Showcase. This is our team, this is our team, the team guys, with a silver medal at the state level. Last year, they won number one in nation. Yes, these ladies were number one in nation, okay? So, everybody. Continuing with this list, Evan Martinez, gold at district, Video Production. Samuel Guerrero, also gold in district, Video Production. Alan Hernandez, gold in Video Production. And Manuel Gonzalez, also gold, Video Production as well. Of course, we can't forget about Jules Nuncio, all right? Now, Jules got elected as Skills USA District Officer for the 23, 24th school year. Another one of our representatives, representing the valley up there. Also, we can bring up Mr. Joel Olínez, our awesome instructor. Jules. Stay with me, doing an awesome job. Will the parents of these young men and women, please stand up and be recognized. I do want to mention that this is Mr. Olínez, last year he was in primary. We're going to sort him this way, okay? Thank you all so much. Oh, they look shocked in there, they're red. Doesn't look like they're red. They're in purple, so, sorry. I have to throw that one in. Now we go to our unfortunate. First person is Zinede Garcia and Mark Anthony Lucio. Both of these young men and women are also officers in our district level. So they'll be, we've got nice representations in San Benito in the valley, okay? So it's nice to see them out there making their speeches and doing all that. Over thousands of kids, and it was tough. Let's bring up Mr. Lucio as well, our instructor. They competed against other leaders across the Rio Grande Valley and then organized a strip screening for up to 2,000 students with the district 13. So, will the parents, please stand up and be recognized. I've got to understand, when I mention district, it doesn't mean San Benito district. It means the whole Rio Grande Valley, okay? So, just, yeah. Make sure we get the terminology right, it's the whole valley. Thank you all so much, congratulations. All right, continuing with our graphic design and multimedia arts. All right, this is placing 13 programs. They advanced from Harley to the state conference in Corpus Christi, starting with Lauren Adilada, who had first place in Photography Project, excellent award, second division at the state level. Adriana Atiaga, first place in district. And also, state Superior Award, Division One at the state level. Alexis Cananosa, also district one first place, and also state Excellent Award, second place at the state level. Instructor Isabel de la Cruz, please come over. Jassem González, also district first place Photography Project. And Excellent Award, second place at state. Cecilia de la Cruz, Digital first place, Digital Illustration Project. Also won a second place at the, at the state level. Adriana Sávila, first place Photography Project, and also Excellent Award, second place at the state. Okay, was she here? No, we got them all in. All right. We got quite a few though, all right? I know, because when I went, when I walked to look at the project, all I could see was a whole line of San Benito. I said, man, we make it, Joel. Great job. Will the parents, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you all so much, congratulations. Anybody else? There you go. That's quite a bit of skills, all right? Next group, we move over to give you a little bit, we go over. Next group, we move over to give you a little bit, we go over to our FFA group, all right? I tell you what, I've been around those guys and, and young men and young women, talk about a hardworking group. This is tough, okay? They get up in the morning, have to be there, animals, things, fans, do all they need to do in the morning before they go to first career. And then after school, come back and do it all over again, and then they bring them home, all right? That's a lot of work, okay? I'll be back if you get to school time and maybe you meet the guy. But, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna bring over our new instructor, new act instructor, Mr. Eddie Garcia, to help me out with this. He can, he can do better just than, and explain some of these awards that these young men and women uh, received at the Mercedes Lockup Show and other awards. Garcia? Oh, by the way, Mr. Robles Alt is here as well.
School Board members and the, the senior superintendent, parents, and my league supervisor, Ms. Mamie Lopez, and my, uh, director, Mr. Russus, uh, welcome, thank you for having us. And, uh, this man at my side is somebody we've been trying to recruit for a few years. He's the new wealthy teacher slash FFA, uh, sponsor here. That's really been giving us a helping hand in terms of trips, um, out at the act farm. Just tremendous amount of assistance we needed him. Thank you for putting him on board with us. Thank you, welcome Michael, Michael Robles. Just real quick, I know a lot of you know what the FFA is about, but a lot of us have the, the mentality that it's animal, you guys showed during spring break. Animals, deer, pigs, lambs, goats, you guys showed during spring break. And we need to be made aware of it, it's a lot more than that. There are such things as LDEs and CDEs. These guys, our kids go to compete in the fall on LDEs against other schools and FFA chapters. Things like ACT Skill Development, Godfather Skills, Pre Speaking, Parliamentary Procedure, very, very things and, uh, traits that are needed for future production, keep our kids and keep stacking them up. But what I strive, like you strive, is productive members of society. We need them for this. The CDEs is spring. Those kids that you just saw walking with their jackets, they got in from Rockstown, they dropped off in a hurry. They were speaking events and speaking against kids in Area Ten. From Pleasanton down to Corpus down to Valley, they made it, they're here. In the summertime, just so you know, in the summertime, leadership camps, state conventions, we're all over the place. Don't pigs, don't seers, the kids can get into different avenues. The ones that don't wanna do animals, it is not called the Future Fundament of America anymore. It's an FFA, it's just the FFA, a leadership organization that's in every town in the state of Texas, that's in every state in the United States and all over the world. And that's why we're proud to say it's one of our most useful organizations in the world. We've got some students tonight that we're gonna showcase out here, and, um, they're not all here, you know, that's, um, they've got, uh, DC band projects going on, but Abraham Garcia, come on out. This is, we're really proud of. He had a First Place goat, a First Place lamb. He showed a lot of champion seers during the year. Very proud of him. This young man got elected, you can see the back of his jacket, turn around Abraham. Tip a text, turn around, let us see. He just got elected, tip a text president. So, San Benito Rahares, the president. San Benito is very proud because the president is going out, we got them back to back, and she's fixing to come out here. Heidi, come on out, senior. Heidi serves as our typical president this year, and she's on her way out, but we're very proud of her. She showed a Second Place Lamb at Mercedes. Heidi also had the reserve champion breeding hog on Mercedes. Second Place market hog in the cross division, and she also had a final lamb that went second. We're very proud of you, Heidi. Coming on next, Nathan, come on out. Nathan Hernandez. We're very proud of Nathan, he showed a lamb this year, he went third in the lamb division. This young man's been with us for a long time, and, uh, we're just very proud, just to watch him grow. Congratulations to you, Nathan. Alex Zavala. Third place with a market lamb. Like I said, they were out there in the creek speaking in Rockstown about three hours ago. Thank you guys for making it here on time. It's very important that we showcase, uh, our club, and, uh, Alex has done a tremendous job. She's our vice president for next year. From there, we go to Crystal Barra. Crystal, the little one of our officers, congratulations this year, we sat this year ago. She's really turned into a tremendous officer, she really did us a lot of good. Thank you, Crystal, to you. Caleb Leves from the Miller Jordan Middle School. Where are you, Caleb Leves? Caleb, the First Place, Second Place, uh, with his market chester hog. And we're very proud of him, he's eleventh grader at San Benito High School. From there, we go to Sean, come on out, Sean. Sean Garza, this is Heidi's little brother. Three champion with his market hog, we're very proud of him. He's been with us in the junior FFA program since we were nine years old, and just look at him grow. Congratulations, Sean, tremendous job. From there, we've got students that, um, there are different events, but there's one that we do wanna mention. We got a little fellow, um, by the name of Daniel Guzman, he's at Dr. Rolone Elementary. The highest paying prize at the Rio Grande Valley Lockup Show is the Market Seer Division. He had the reserve grand, fourteen thousand dollars went into his parents' pockets and him. We're very glad, um, we've got a very, very diversified program board members, and by that, I, I really mean the wealthy, the animals, the animal husbandry, okay? Just different kind of things and different avenues. Like my old dad teaches, some of the Brazilians tell me, Ed, we gotta offer different, you know, things for the kids, and that's what we try to do. Please know and please always remember, it's just not a pig, a lamb, and a goat, you guys are gonna go to a show spring break. We've got competitions, like I said, in the fall and in the spring. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Russus, for helping us out. This man here actually dug up a bunch of clubs, okay? And it's harder, so we understand sometimes, you know, all kids are important. Parents, thank you very much. Angie, come on out. Angie's a student we've also had many, many years. Um, Angie's one that has shown different projects, but you need to know, Angie's one of our new incoming officers. You have no idea that later, I'll probably do our own. We've seen Angie grow over the years, and, um, to the parents, all the parents that are here, please stand up for the, the face seats out here. We're really proud of this.
Thank you, Mr. Christie, I knew it, I told you, you can do a good job of it. I tell you what, a hardworking group, we're so proud of, we're so proud of our parents, uh, they come out here and support us. It is, it is a task, uh, to do this, so it is nonstop, nonstop. We're proud of everybody.
Mr. Dominguez, come on in.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is our interact teacher with the Gary Gomigas, and then there's another one, Borjeda. And I'll tell you exactly why Mr. Dominguez walked in late. He's the one that was, uh, bringing the kids back, and it's for Geda from Rockstown. They did real good, so congratulations.
Good job, everyone. Boy, thank you very much, I hand it over to the next person.
Our next student to be recognized is Miller Jordan Middle School student, Rhiannon, Rhiannon Lick. She competed in an art contest with the Texas Association of People Transportation. It was a safety coaster contest. She won First Place in the Division. And she represents Division Three. Uh, she received a yellow ribbon, she's wearing. And Ms. Nancy Martinez is going to present her with a two hundred and fifty dollar scholarship. You will make Elsa Lambert, please join us on stage. She is Miller Jordan College student. Now, we go to the next student at the State, in the State Transportation Contest. Each of the four divisions across Texas has a First Place winner. Each of the four First Place winners are now competing at the national level. So, she will be competing against a firm number of students from every state across the United States. And I believe the winner will be Ms. Martha. Ms. Relena Chalde, which are. And you will be posting a photo of her artwork. It actually, and I noticed it, I really, today we went to a carment conference. It was a school bus picking up kids at one of our local carment conferences. And once you see it, you'll know exactly which one it is. So, congratulations. Well, for long term, for current term? Our upper student to be recognized is Javier Sosa, San Diego High School. He was a date scholar and a member of the date scholarship class of twenty twenty-three. He is one of seven hundred and fifty scholars chosen from a pool of over fifty-one thousand applicants from across the nation. Javier now belongs to a youth group of young leaders, all who represent the very pinnacle of academic achievement, service, and commitment. He will be attending UT Austin on Core Right Foundation. We have our three newest school choir to be recognized tonight for their, uh, regional equity. However, they're all headed under choir hundreds. So, we will be bringing them back and, and should be able to support them.
Next item will be three point one, canvassing the votes of School Board of Trustee election held on May sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so tonight we have Ms. Mata that will be, uh, outlining it, helping us canvass the votes for our School Board of Trustee elections, twenty-three, May twenty-three. Uh, we also have Ms. Gonzalez helping her.
We have the two blocks, the two blocks, and the four blocks. How do you do now with the time limit for the May sixth, twenty-three connection? And it started with the board trustee's place four, and then, uh, this whole, uh, land of campus local receiving four, a thousand four hundred and six votes. Julian J. Rios receiving fourteen hundred total votes. And then we had one over vote, and then fifty-five under votes. And board trustee's place five, we had Lady Corona receiving a thousand five hundred and fifty votes. Jack Garcia receiving a thousand three hundred and fifty votes. Zero over votes, and then fifty-seven under votes. For board trustee's place six, we had Alex Raymond with a thousand four hundred and fifty votes. And then we had Ramiro Mariano Moreno receiving a thousand three hundred and eighty votes. Zero over votes, and then eighty-seven under votes. For board trustee's place seven, we have Fritosso Gomes Junior receiving a thousand two hundred and twenty-six votes. Michael Bartek receiving a thousand two hundred and twenty-seven votes. One over vote, and then seventy-six under votes. Any questions?
Any question, ma'am?
If you need to make a motion to the council.
Do I have a motion to accept that campus?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lopez, second by Fritosso Gomes, all in favor, raise your right hand. Service, thank you, ma'am. Next item will be three point two, Presentation of Secretary of Election and Statement of Elected Officer.
We have this, with us this evening, if we put the mask in, it's gonna, for the first three, four members, if they're, uh, if they're behind us, it's gonna be the, uh, the, uh, the start which, uh, they swore, like the view of the law of this.
Robert, congratulations.
Thank you. We thank you, my friend, and repeat that. I, Alvarado Lopez.
I, Alvarado Lopez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the officer.
The duties of the officer.
Some meaningful school board trustee's place four.
Some meaningful school board trustee's place four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
For the United States.
For the United States.
End of this station.
End of this station.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand, and repeat that. I, Lady Corona.
I, Lady Corona.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will faithfully execute, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the officer, the duties of the officer, some meaningful school board trustee's place five, some meaningful school board trustee's place five, of the state of Texas, of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend, preserve, protect, and defend, the Constitution and laws, the Constitution and laws, for the United States, for the United States, end of this station.
End of this station.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
You got it. He's a little taller. Mr. Reyna, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Alex Reyna.
I Alex Reyna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties and the office of.
San Benito School Board Trustee place six.
San Benito School Board Trustee place six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
For the United States.
For the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My pleasure to be here today to, for a good friend of mine, Fritosso Gomez. It's a very special day for him and his family.
Thank you Judge.
So would you raise your right hand for me please?
Yes sir.
I Fritosso Gomez Jr.
I Fritosso Gomez Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I would faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of San Benito C I S D, board member number seven.
San Benito Y S D, school board member place seven.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will do so to the best of my ability.
And will do so to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you Judge.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. I will be very happy.
Thank you.
Next item will be 3.4, reorganization of board officers. Is there any nomination?
I would like to nominate Orlando Lopez for board president.
There's some, Orlando Lopez for president? Any other?
A second.
Second by Mr. Reyna. All in favor? Right hand? Mr. Lopez. Congratulations, Mr. Lopez, and it's all yours brother.
Thank you sir, appreciate it. Okay, at this moment, let's continue. At this moment, I want to, I'll take a nomination for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Ariel Cruz for vice president.
We have a nomination on the floor for Dr. Ariel Cruz. Anyone else?
I second that motion.
Okay, I got a second by Mr. Fritosso Gomez. Can I have a, can I have a show of hands in favor of? Congratulations, Dr. Cruz on vice president. Okay, this, at this time, I'll take a nomination for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Rudy Corona for secretary.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion on the floor and I got a second by Mr. Seelo. All in favor, raise your right hand? Congratulations, Mr. Mr. Corona on being a secretary. Uh, that, that, at this moment, I think it's only fitting enough for, to, to allow the, the new officers and the newly elected board members to, to have a, you know, a few minutes to, to express their, 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 their feelings and happiness about, about joining the board. So at this moment, I'll, I'll allow Mr. Alex Reyna to go first and then we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, sure. I'm kind of rusty. This is my first time, okay? So please bear with me. First, I want to thank you, my, my family for being here, always my big supporters. Judge Garza, thank you for, for everything. Um, the board, Mr. Vion. I'm here to do the right thing. And, um, I know my people have been asking me, uh, your sign said, uh, an independent voice. And trust me, I'm an independent voice. And I'm here for every, and each one of you, employees, teachers, students, staff. Whatever you guys need, I'm open. Okay? Thank you. I'm very excited. This is my first time. Uh, I'm a little bit nervous, you know, but, um, I get a, I got a special, special seat right next to Mr. Vion, right? But, uh, thank you and God bless you all.
Mr. Gomez, sir?
Thank you. I started this adventure three months ago in December and I was unanimously voted in by the pass board. And I appreciate that. I, I, now that I ran, I wasn't sure if I wanted to run, but a lot of people came forward and asked me to run. And that's what I did. I do want to say that I plan to work 100% with this board to make sure that we get the best things done for our students. The students are our future. I've always said that. But the only way we can make this succeed is the people that are sitting up here in the front need to work as a team. That's the only way. That's the only way. And I plan to work with everyone, listen, but I still will vote my way because that's why the people voted me. I'm their voice, as I stated. And, and that's the only way to go. We have to be united and not divided. That's always been my statement. And I will work closely with everyone here. Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm going to go in and do now is if, if the, the officers want to say a few words. Dr. Ariel Cruz?
Above all, I want to thank God for giving us this opportunities to serve the school district. I'd like to thank my family, the families of all of us here. I mean, it's, it's a lot. The phone calls, the meetings, the events, but to have the support that we have at home to be able to do this, it, it's amazing. And like, we had the teacher of the year luncheon today and it's like I told the people in that room, I'm a child of an educator and a lot of us up here have family members in education. So we've always served to be that support system for those educators. And we continue to be that support system for all of the staff of San Benito and all of the students. And I look forward to working as a team with each and every one of the people up here. And we're gonna do what needs to be done for our students and our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Corona.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank our Lord for this opportunity. Also, I want to thank my beautiful wife, my daughter, and my brother-in-law and my family for coming out and joining and all friends. Because without you guys, we wouldn't be up here. But we're here for you as a community and we're going to continue to be in your voice. I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much for all the help.
So I guess that being said, they pretty much covered everything, so I'm just going to repeat what they said because they pretty much covered it all, you know? Uh, as, as you all know, or as you can tell, it's a great group of people up here and I'm super excited to be, uh, be elected by the community once again. I want to thank my family, first and foremost, my wife and my son, my parents, and all my family and my friends. Uh, you know what? This journey's been a long journey. It's been a tough journey, journey. But, uh, but together we can accomplish a lot of things with, with great things in mind and, and having a positive attitude. Uh, and once again, you know, my, my main focus and my main vision since I started this whole process, you know, years, years ago, is, you know, I'm a stakeholder. My, my son and I was in seventh grade and I have a vested interest in this school district. So we have a lot of talent here, you know, uh, it takes a lot for people to run for office. Uh, like, you know, like Ariel, Rudy, Fritosso, like all these people will tell you up here, you know, it, it, it's, it's a journey. It's a long, long, long haul and you try to do what's best for everyone, you know? But at the end of the day, I will tell you one thing, this group of, I can't be more excited to be representing this board with this group of great people here. And I look forward to, once again, focusing on what's good for our district and moving our district forward. And I will guarantee you that that's what I'm going to fight for every single day, is what's best for our kids and our staff and San Benito C I S D. So God bless each and every one of y'all. Thank you so much. So at this moment, it's, uh, if my phone is correct, 6:31, we're going to take a quick recess and, um, and we'll be back shortly. Thank you. Uh, there's, there's some refreshments over here, so if you guys want some refreshments and some snacks, go ahead. Thank you. Okay, we open back the meeting at 6:58. Uh, next is five is a public comment. Dr. Cruz?
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics which they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints. And policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or at the district's central administration office. Thank you. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Mary Maney.
Thank you Superintendent Sevion, Board President Mr. Lopez, and all the rest of you. And congratulations on, uh, the reelections, the new offices, and may this be a board that is more harmonious and unified. With only seven days left till, and a wake-up call to graduation, we have a lot of things to be thankful for. Uh, one of the things is all the staff and faculty who have been stepping up to help cover shortages in everything from bus drivers, custodians, teachers, to administration. They don't get acknowledgement for what they're doing. They just take it on and do it because it needs to be done so the kids can be successful. Also, a big thank you needs to be going out to all the staff who have stepped out to help prepare our students by pulling them out, reorganizing their classes for the TSI, the AOCs, the MAPS testing, you know, finals and TSIs. And, and with regard to the TSIs, a special thank you to all the people that have stepped up to help tutor and bring these kids to TSI completion, as well as the teachers who are taking time out to actually do the testing. It makes a huge difference to tutor a student versus put them in front of a computer program, particularly in the math area, because, um, the program that they're using is based on the old TSI, not the new TSI. So it is not getting them to the level they need to be to do it. So please consider that when you're, um, thinking about staffing for summer school. It would be really nice to make sure we got TSI tutors. Um, also, a big thank you to the relationships that CTA, CTE is building between the schools and the community, um, especially at the high school level, which has brought us to a whole bunch of the people that came up to be recognized and, um, honored today. We also cannot say enough about the strong relationship that this district has between our campus polices, the sheriff's department, and other local law enforcement. It just, um, makes us a better school district, a safer school district. I also want to commend Superintendent Sevion for, uh, going ahead and backing the halting of the PAC and the Notoria at this moment because of the foundation problems. It'd be so much easier to fix it on this end rather than wait until we've got it done and then have to go start in and tear things apart. This is a huge safety, potential safety issue, and a very expensive one if it happens, uh, particularly with the Notoria. Also, for all the, uh, we need to be thankful for all the co- cooperation that we have between our various clubs and organizations to make field trips and events possible and make them the success that they are. Uh, we do encourage, and it is more evident here in this district than a lot of the others, the students to cooperate and show that same level of relationship that we've been trying for everybody else. Again, congratulations to all those that, uh, one, they participated at regional, they went on to state, they got medals, they're going to nationals. Um, I do not have personally any kids. I have the kind I try to give away back at 4:30. But it was so nice to actually look up there and recognize a whole bunch of my kids that I've dealt with either through clubs or that. So, um, a big shout out to all the teachers that have helped support these kids uh, in their endeavors, as well as helping make it possible for them to do. So, as I said, most of the things I wanted to say today was continuing that good thread going through because we are a great district and we have the potential to be even greater. It just requires a lot of cooperation, understanding, and a willingness to work together. And if the kids can do it, there's no reason the adults can't do it. All right? So, as I said, again, thank you and congratulations to all of you. Look forward to the next set of meetings that we also are having. But even better, it's seven and a wake-up call to graduation.
Thank you, Ms. Maney. Our next speaker will be Ms. Lupita Ortega.
Good evening. Um, are you going to go ahead and put the timer or do I have to put my own timer?
Thank you again. And I want to congratulate everybody.
You know, uh, the board members that were re-elected and new board members. I also want to say thank you to the community of San Benito for going out and exercising your right to vote. Everyone made a difference and your voices were heard. Thank you. For the board, you all, the new and the re-elected board members of seven, you will be working together. And as you work, you will have different ideas with different visions, but that's what makes you unique and special. So I also thank you. This one is going to be, um, the superintendent. This year, I've been coming and speaking up and it's This year, I've been coming and speaking up and it's been uncertain concerns that I've had with the school. Either it be safety, teaching, curriculum, testing, STARS, you name it, I've been here and I've had my concerns. My one concern was this last month on April 12th, when the superintendent decided to deliberate against me. This was personally to me, I was sitting in the audience and you were looking straight at me. I was the only one talking about the STARS, I've been the only one talking about the insurance, but you went ahead and did that to me in front of the community. And it states there in policy DGB that you're not supposed to deliberate, not even the board members are supposed to deliberate. So as you board members, you come in, I want you to look at what kind of superintendent you have. You are there to hear us out, you are there to have an open hand, you are there to help us out, but even when I try to reach you emails, you don't respond back to me. You don't have a door open policy, every time I call, you're not there. You as a superintendent should be there for the community as much as for the students. And this is one of the things that I've really gotten to know. How many more minutes do I have, Mrs. Superintendent? The other topic that I do have is the breach. Everybody knows about the breach, but nobody wants to touch it. We've had, in January, we had Ms. Lee Peña, who was the one that showed the presentation on the breach, what happened. Let me ask you something, Superintendent, I've asked for records and I've been waiting since January 11th. We are May 16th, and I still have not gotten my response. And I don't know, is it because you don't want to give me the information? Or I don't know, maybe because there was never information to start off with. I had asked for the cyber department, I had asked for the report, I had asked for IT breach from the police. I had asked for the protocol and procedures, I had asked for all this information, and I still haven't received it. It's already gone on four months, and I don't know how come I haven't received it. Because even the district attorney had said everything was clear, so I don't know why they're withholding it. Secondly, diplomas. I don't know if you all heard, but this year, graduation will be allowing employees to adventure and the board members the option to present students with their high school diploma. One single parent, and they will be reserved for the parents, and one parent will come down. Let me ask you something, employees, put yourself in their shoes. A mom upstairs waiting to give a diploma, their child is going to graduate the same way as an employee, do we think it's fair? Remember, we're not here to pick and choose, we're here to see what's fair, and do you think it's fair? And I will tell you, the board didn't know because I have the email. There's no board members on the names, not even the principal signed it. A principal, and it's coming from the high school, he didn't even sign it? And another thing, it's not even in Spanish, do you know how it is for a Spanish-speaking employee? That's discrimination, that is plain about discrimination, especially when you have the students, who's going to get hurt? Students that are walking, my parent can't give me the diploma, why? Because they don't work for the district. We're here to be fair, we're not here to pick and choose. Let me ask you all something, would you like it if you would have been on that side and said, you know what, I can't give that diploma? But they are, that's not fair. Remember, we're here because of the students, we're here for fairness. And you as board, I expect you all to do this, but since you all don't know, this is on the superintendent, this is on her. And my last thing is the lady hounds. I want to congratulate the lady hounds, they've been awesome, they're going to regionals. And also the coaches and the staff, but especially Mr. Dan Gomez, AD, he's doing an awesome job. How many more minutes do I have? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. The next speaker will be Ms. Lori Hernandez.
Good evening, board. As you know, my name's Lori Hernandez, and I want to thank you and I'm appreciative, you know, for you guys here. I know you guys are the voice of all of us here, so we appreciate it and we thank you. And I want to congratulate you guys, you know, for your all's positions now. I know together you all will be a powerhouse and work together to meet the needs of every student. So my topic, of course, is cheerleading, and I'm here because I've brought forth so many concerns regarding our cheerleading program. I have been a consecutive cheer mom since 2014, and like I've stated before, I'm probably one of the longest cheer moms here, and I take cheer very passionately, especially for our children, because they come and they work hard and they bring all they can for cheerleading. So when I come, I, as a parent, I'm sorry, I guess I'm a little upset because first and foremost, I have an incident that occurred with the VMA principal here, Ms. Mamie Lopez. So we had a tryout that happened, and all I asked for fairness. Before our tryout occurred, I went ahead and I brought forth my concerns, the only questions I addressed were the Constitution. I made sure I asked, will all the judges be licensed, certified, credentialed? I brought that up, I brought up if they would not be affiliated with the district, I brought that up as well. So after the tryout happened, my daughter received her results for the tryouts. And I questioned myself on it because it's safe to say my daughters are highly talented in their skill level when it comes to cheerleading. However, at this point, receiving those results, it was just a questionable doubt. So I went forth, I brought it to Mamie's attention, and I asked if her attendance was accounted for because it was brought to my attention that her attendance was not accounted for. So Mamie said yes, she did some clarification and so forth, which I understood. And at first, that first day, she was very respectful and so forth, and I appreciated her for that. However, she gave me my daughter's score sheets, and on the score sheets, there was a consistent discrepancies. Every judge scored her a 30-point difference, not every judge, from one judge to another. So my first thing was, okay, are these judges licensed, certified, and credentialed? That's something that I hold to high standards for our children. So nonetheless, Mamie said, yes, they were. So it was a 30-point difference, I'm sorry? Okay, I'm sorry, Mamie, did you say something? Yeah, she did. Okay, is this taking up my minutes because I had Mamie make a comment in the back? So can I go back to my minutes where I left off? Okay. I'm sorry, and that is exactly why I feel just a little bit nervous today, because I do have her here and a lot happened, you know. So I'm going to go back and refrain from that. Can you please tell me how many minutes I have, just so I can get to the point?
Okay, Ms. Hernandez, we're going to give you 20, we're going to give you 20 seconds more, which would pitch you at, you have 2 minutes and 20 seconds left, and just if you could refrain from using an employee's name.
Okay, even though she's a public figure, she's the principal of this campus.
If you could just please refrain from.
Okay, sounds good. Anyhow, so I went to Mamie Lopez and I brought forth my concerns, like I stated. It was, there was a 30-point discrepancy within my daughter's score sheet. So from one judge to another, one judge scored her 60, and then the other judge 90-something. So that alone is questionable doubt. Nonetheless, I had her, she threw a world pass, and one judge scored her a nine, and the other judge, I'm sorry, scored her a five, I'm sorry, not a nine, a five. So that tells me right there, okay, obviously, these judges aren't licensed, certified, or credentialed. So I find out that these judges are from the lower valley, something I asked for. One of the judges was affiliated here with VMA, she was a teacher here at VMA, she was a dance, co-dance sponsor, and the judges she brought from Brownsville were also all affiliated within each other. So that right there is an injustice. Nonetheless, I brought all these concerns forth to her, and she didn't like it. She called at the very end, she called security on me, and I didn't do anything wrong. And that's the thing that I'm so, again, I'm sorry, right now, I'm just a little nervous and I'm very disappointed because of the comments that I'm hearing in the back of me, so it is frustrating. Anyhow, I came with good intentions and I came with positive faith and I came with the best interest of the students. That's what I came for, just to ensure that everything was safe all around for all the children. So when I have an administrator, an administrator being rude and disrespectful, telling me that it's her campus and that I cannot, that my daughter cannot speak because she had a question, I was bothered there. I told her, you know what, my daughter, I'm giving her authorization to speak on my behalf. And she said, no, not in my school, not in my campus, I say who can speak and who can't.
Not to interrupt the grievance presentation, thank you, thank you. But this would be a good time to remind everyone during public comment that there is a grievance policy and that there are ways to bring up specific complaints as to specific situations through a grievance procedure.
Would you like to continue?
You have 26 seconds.
Nonetheless, I could not finish my topic, like I said, I apologize, I'm a little nervous right now, I'm a little upset, and I shouldn't be upset. I should leave that in the hands of the Lord, but I feel like it's a total retaliation, especially when I had her call security on me because I had different stories in all aspects, and as security, we're not criminals, we're not bad people. My mother actually is, you know, going through some circumstances. We brought forth to you, Ms. Servion, and at the end of the day, she wanted to escort it out because she wanted to go based on old score sheets with new score sheets. And again, I know I'm going to have to come back with this on a revamp everything and come back because today, after, like I stated, after seeing what I did and I'm hearing the comments over here in the back, it just leaves me a little bit nervous. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Our next public comment speaker will be Ms. B. Palomino Villarreal.
Hi. Before my minutes start, Mr. Weller, you violated her Texas Constitution rights. It says, "No district shall take, a district shall take no action abridging the freedom of speech or the right of the people to petition the board for readdress or grievances." Even if she brought her grievance up here to attention because it's the only way that we can bring it up to the board, you have no right to stop her. And being that Ms. Lopez, she is a public servant, a public official, she is allowed to say her name and address it to you without you impeding her First Amendment right.
Okay, Ms. B. Palomino Villarreal, we will now proceed with your topic that is on the public participation request form, and your time begins now.
My topic tonight is five minutes. Well, first of all, congratulations on everyone who got elected and re-elected for tonight. I don't want to take too much time up because then it cuts into my time, but congratulations. I believe that five minutes is not enough time, is not enough time to state how many policies that S. Servion has violated in this district. All of these policies that she has violated, they stem out of the FNG policy that you want us to go ahead and file under, Mr. Weller. In order for us to be able to file, well, we have to have direction. And the grievances have to make it at one point to the people that they have to, the administration that it needs to be guided to. But you have allowed, Ms. Servion, for your administration, your assistant superintendent from student success to the HR assistant superintendent to misguide us parents, to purposely set us up for failure and not ever able to get our grievances to where they should be. You have, because of that, because of the FNG policy, the policies that stem from that is DHC, which you have revoked and you have violated, AEI policy, policy FFG, which is student welfare, policy DHB, legal, which is defining abuse, policy FFI, even though the community has been outraged on the bullying, you refuse, Ms. Servion, and you find excuses. You continue to let the victims, you continue to state that we victims are out of the timeframe, but you have allowed us to fall out of that timeframe. You have purposely, purposely misguided us and allowed your staff to misguide us, I will emphasize on that. Instead of taking accountability or holding your incompetent administration team that you have brought in, or should I say your friends, accountable?
Mrs. Vice President, the comments that are occurring right now seem very much like personal attacks.
I believe that when she spoke on April 12th at the meeting, and she replied, she had done a response against me, which stated she wasn't privileged to fight for certain kids, for one or two students. I wasn't here to rebuttal, and I didn't see you stop her. And under, once again, the First Amendment right, and here, you want this policy, your policy.
Ms. B. Palomino Villarreal, you have five minutes, we're going to go back to that. And as long as you keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous and avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks, nobody will interrupt you anymore and we will give you back your time.
Yes, ma'am, that's my point as well.
I am not privileged to fight for one or two students. I come and fight for more than one or two, the privileged one here is you, you get paid for it. I don't, I'm not on a paycheck, I'm not on your payroll. It actually takes time away from my family, from my friends, from anything that I have to do. It takes my time away from that because I'm really busy focused looking at the policies that you're violating. Now, if we were doing your due diligence, what you were hired for, we wouldn't be here. How many Level 3 grievances haven't made it to the board? How many of them? Let me guess, nine in your eyes? You guys even predate your responses to me, what you're going to tell me right back, you predate them. I know you act surprised, but we all know what you've done. The biggest policy that you have violated is the Texas Educator Code of Ethics. You've allowed your administrators to also violate that. Example, the information of the juvenile to the nephew of Judge Garza, the way, the reason I know all that information is because you told me yourself. Oh, I guarantee you that I can sit in front of those parents and that conversation that you and I had, it transpired. You have violated so many of these policies that I call for immediate investigation and suspend, to suspend you, to follow after that. Due to your reckless behavior, children continue to be harmed. And they will continue until you either remove yourself or do what you were hired to do. I have brought to your attention the JJAEP school. I can't believe you all put it back on the board and the agenda. After showing you the text messages, knowing that our children are engaging into a drug that's of a higher danger, a higher degree than what they first went in there with, you're going to allow that school, you want to reconsider a contract with them? We are not, that's an option, we as a district do not have to come into an agreement or sign a contract with them. Instead, we have empty places, other schools, that you can go ahead, reopen those up, hire people, that's a job opportunity, and get counselors to help our children.
Thank you, Ms. B. Palomino Villarreal, we appreciate your time.
And that concludes the public comment portion for this evening.
Okay, we'll move on to board reports, there are no board reports, we're going to move on to item number 7, superintendent reports. Ms. Servion, I mean remarks, I'm sorry, 7.1.
So, good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to start off by congratulating all our incoming trustees as they will be leading our district into the future. The year 2324 will bring in the Collegiate Academy for 6th through 8th graders, which will have a strong focus on preparing our kids for post-secondary opportunities and education. Also, we will be opening our doors to the Global Leadership Academy for grades pre-K through 5. Again, that academy will focus on entrepreneurship, global economics, and worldwide social justice. It is truly a great time to be a Greyhound. We also look forward to wrapping up the 2223 school year. We are anticipating much learning for both teachers and students during the summer months. We will continue to center our instruction on deep conceptual-based learning, focusing on reading, writing, and math, offering our students an opportunity to close any academic gaps. This summer, SBC ISD will offer EOC prep, credit recovery, accelerated instruction, extended-year services for special needs students, Project Smart for migrant students, gifted and talented camps and field trips, after-school programming, intensive English for 3rd through 5th graders, linguistic support for our rising limited English speakers in 1st grade, and under CTE culinary and welding. welding. SAMNUCISD truly has so much to offer. Our choice education programs will ensure students receive instruction in content areas they are passionate about, and will further ensure our students are engaged in deep, rigorous programming. So, thank you for everybody that supports SAMNUCISD. Thank you to all the staff, and most especially, thank you to all our students for working so hard. President Lopez.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to number eight, 8.1, Academic Health Report. Ms. Servián.
Yes, so I will be calling up Dr. McGee. We do not have a project, projection device, so I apologize for that. We do have a copy for each board member, as this is our HB3 requirement. This is what connects our district goals and also our superintendent goals to how we move the district forward. So, Dr. McGee, I know you also have Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Cornet.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Servián. In 2019, you did, in accordance with the TEA, adopted HB3 board goals. This evening, we have Mrs. Cornet, our Director of Elementary Instructional Implementation, and Mrs. Rodriguez, our Coordinator for Secondary, excuse me, Secondary Instructional Implementation, who will review the HB3 board goals and progress. Mrs. Cornet?
Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the board, Superintendent Servián. In alignment with the State 60 by 30 by Texas Goal, which states that 60% of Texas in just 25 to 34 will be, either have a post-secondary credential or degree by the year 2030, House Bill 3 requires school boards to adopt plans to achieve goals in two key areas: third grade, where we look at early literacy, early math, and in high school for CCMR. So, today, our SBCISD HB3 board outcome goals were presented and adopted in January of 2021, and today we'll be providing our yearly update on our progress toward our identified goals in early literacy, early math, and CCMR. So, our first goals for early literacy, these are set at the MEATs level. As you know, we're using STAR for third grade. We set goals for early literacy, and these are gonna be set at the MEATs level, excuse me. So, we use 2019 as our baseline. In 2019, we had 39% of our students performing at the MEATs level, and we want to achieve by 2024, 60% of our students performing at that level. You can see then, 2020, we had our COVID year, and then we had goals that were established for the next consecutive four years. In 2021, our goal was 40%. The district performed at 22%. In 2022, our goal is 45%, and you can see that we missed it, just barely missed it by two points, and we were at 43%. This year, our goal is 51%. We will, we have now received our data, but we're hoping that we're gonna be hitting the mark, if not exceeding it. We also set goals for our special populations: Hispanic, special education, economically disadvantaged, and emergent bilinguals. In 2021 and 2022, you can see what the goals were, and in parentheses, you see the actual performance of the district for those particular years. And all of this data is from our Texas Academic Performance Reports. We move on to our early literacy, early childhood math goals. Now, again, we're using our STAR data. We're looking at third grade math. Here, our baseline is at 49%, with our ultimate goal of 60% by 2024. In 2021, our goal was 22%, we performed at 14%, but you can see that the district bounced back. In 2022, our goal was 43%. We came up to 35%, and in 2023, our goal for this year is 51%. Again, closing the gaps, our special population groups. You can see our performance, our goals, and then our performance level. Again, we're not quite there yet as of last year, but we are making significant gains, and we hope to exceed them this year.
Ms. Cornet, can you explain, because we look at the trajectory from 2019, of course, 2020, but then in 2019, we're at a 49%, and in 2021, we set a goal of 22%. Can you explain that? Because I want them to understand what happened with mathematics during the COVID era.
So, mathematics is a foundational... It builds every year you're learning, and you're building on foundational skills. And what we experienced was that with the loss of instructional, hands-on instruction in the classrooms with manipulatives, our students were missing a lot of those foundation skills that you build upon in order for them to move, master the skill sets for that particular school year. So, with COVID, you can see in 2022 that we had a significant drop in our math skills. So, we're having to do extraordinary work. The teachers and administrators of the campuses are working really hard, and our focus right now is on math and helping teachers and students close those gaps.
So, what the state of Texas brought out was basically that students that stayed home during COVID, if these were very capable students, they actually hit it out of the park in math and in reading, but most especially in math, because they were to be able to go at their pace. When they come back to school, you see them lose ground. But unfortunately for our kids that are at risk or that need more support, we saw the opposite. And that is a report that TEA put out, and then also, actually, the state of Texas and the entire United States put out. Sorry, go ahead.
Finally, you'll see all district investments aligned to HB3 goals. One of the biggest ones has been the reading academies. And so, here we have intense instruction for teachers, specifically for reading. In 2020, 2021, we had 100 teachers in our cohort. We focus on kinder, first-grade, special education teachers, RTI teachers, and assistant principals. In 2122, we had a 56 participation cohort, second-grade teachers, our dyslexia teachers, principals, and new teachers. This year, we have an 80-person cohort with third-grade teachers. We are starting a June cohort with new teachers, new administrators, and anyone who's gonna be reassigned. So, this mandates that anyone who is working with children in K3 has to go through this requirement.
Ms. Cornet, how have you evolved the reading academy instruction for teachers? I know that at one point, I had a lot of teachers not complaining, but stating that they had to either stay a lot extra, or it would take up their time, and they didn't have their planning time. How have we been able to evolve that?
That has evolved. Our first year, it is true, our first year, we did an MOU. We worked with Region 1, and they were our cohort leaders. So, they were leading the trainings. And so, a lot of this was done independently. In the second semester, because we did hear teachers, we started providing teachers at the campus level time to work on it. But what we found was that sometimes things come up, and teachers were being pulled and not being given the time that was supposed to be allocated to them. So, what we did for the next two years, with the last two years that we've done, and I think it's worked really well, what we've done is now we have local implementation. That means we are here. We have our early childhood instructional coach, Ms. Melissa Rodriguez, is our local implementation cohort leader. And what she does is she's regularly working with teachers. We also have one day per month where we pull all teachers at a central location, and Ms. Rodriguez is available to facilitate and support that work. And so, that, and now what we, because our cohort, this last cohort was larger, what we did is we, to give a little flexibility, because one of the things that they struggle with is finding people to cover classes, substitutes, we give campuses two days to choose from. So, every month, we have two days, and so they're able to split up their teachers, so they don't have such a big group of teachers off-campus for these trainings. Also, these are several of the trainings that we provide. The other thing that we do, I do have one-to-one meetings with each campus administrator in elementary. I met with them in the beginning of the year. I meet with them after we have our beginning-of-the-year data, and in the middle of the year, and we'll meet again at the end of the year to kind of monitor student progress towards meeting the goals. Any questions on that?
I noticed on the math, on the Hispanic, it's increased dramatically from 40% to 45% or 36, 14 to 36%. That's outstanding in a whole year, right? Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, Ms. Cornet. I just want to, you know, just reiterate how difficult it's been post-COVID. You know, we all face our challenges, and we know on a daily basis, you know, what we're facing out there, what each and every one of you, our teachers and staff, and as a whole, are facing educating our wonderful kids. And, you know, I just have to commend you guys for coming up with ideas to reassure our parents that we're doing everything we can to, for the kid to catch up, because we know that there was a huge lag there. And each and every one of us up here understands that. And I mean, I'm not speaking for everyone, but we all know the challenges. And so, I just want to commend each and every one of you for all your hard work. We know it's not easy, you know, and I know, because I have a 13-year-old, so trust me, I know it's not easy. So, but I just gotta commend you guys for what you guys are doing, and just keep it up. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, President Lopez, Ms. Servián, board members. I'll be presenting the CCMR goals. If you look on the first slide, it actually shows our goal that was approved in 2021 that said CCMR, CCMR outcomes will increase from 34.3 to 62.5 by June 2024. So, the yearly overall goal for CCMR went from 49% in 2021 to 53.5 in 2022 to 58 2023 and 62.5 2024. That's an increase of 4.5 every year. They kind of, the goals were kept at that pattern, right?
Ms. Rodriguez, I understand that these goals were adopted in 2019, and there was no way that we could adjust them after COVID?
That would be up to you all to approve.
And that would be, have to be consistent with the data that's coming in. So, let's just say we were to exceed the goal this year, 53.5, you know, and next year it's 58. Well, let's say we attained 58%. Now, it wouldn't make sense for, you know, to keep it at 58. So, that's when you really adjust it based on the data we're going to be receiving. So, data will not come in until August this year, because there has been a revamp with STAR and the way that STAR will be evaluated and graded for our students, which we reviewed that with you previously about how progress measures will be different this year. We'll give them a refresher probably in June. We'll give, we'll have Ms. Rodriguez go through it again. Yes?
Thank you. And actually, it might be something that you might want to consider to go ahead and reapprove different goals, only because of the information I'll be sharing with you. So, if you look at closing the gaps, the yearly targets for the subpopulations for Hispanic and Ecodis, those were the only two populations that used goals. HB3 does require us to have annual targets for students in each group evaluated under closing the gap. So, we should have goals also for special education and for emergent bilinguals, which are right now blank, right? If you look at it, however, Hispanic and Ecodis also followed the 4.5% increase every year from 2021 to 2024. So, the next page are my recommendations. If we're gonna be following that same pattern of 4.5, so if you look at the state accountability targets as the minimum targets for 2021, specifically for special ed, it was a 30. And if we followed the 4.5 pattern, then it would be 34.5 for 2022, 39 for 2023, and 43.5 for 2024. Same thing for emergent bilinguals. That way, we could have goals in there as well. The target minimum for the state accountability is 20, was 27 for 2021, so we kept adding the 4.5 every year to reach a 40.5 in 2024. Okay? The third page on there does give us the actual percentages that we've been reaching. So, in 2021, even though our goal was 49%, we did get a 67%. In 2022, our goal was 53.5. We did reach a 63%. For 2023 and 2024, the data is still pending.
Can I stop you there?
Yes, absolutely.
So, what should have happened after 2021, we should have come back as a board with the superintendent. You obtained a 67%, so that's where you would want to project for the next year, right? But what we did was, we went ahead and kept the percentages that we had adopted. So, right there, you can see that's what I was talking about earlier.
And if you compare the top page to the bottom page, when you look at the subpopulations, Hispanic, we had a 67% for Hispanic, and our goal was only at a 48. So, we should have gone back and adjusted our goals. For 2022, Hispanic was 63. Our goal was 52.6. So, we went above and beyond our actual targets. And you look at the same thing for special education, economically disadvantaged, and emergent bilingual. We have reached every single one of our goals. The data for 2023 and 2024 is still pending. Okay? So, on the last page, what we're doing to maintain our CCMR goals and to continue striving for surpassing the goal is basically meeting the criteria for CCMR, right? We're promoting TSI testing in ELAR and math. We're making sure that we're providing AP examinations for all students taking AP tests, sorry, AP classes. We offer dual-credit courses. We offer extensive amount of industry-based certifications through CTE. We also make sure that we recognize students completing IEPs and workforce readiness, graduate under special education program, along with graduates with an ABS diploma plan, also under special education. This year, they are allowing us to give credit to our military students who are joining the Armed Forces or Texas National Guard. And then, of course, we're making sure that we're monitoring our progress every month through our CCMR tracker by hand. So, we're making sure that as we go through, we want to target those students that are close to meeting a target or close to meeting the CCMR readiness, and then ensuring that they're either taking one of these credit courses or actual TSI tests.
So, why is CCMR readiness important besides our accountability system?
To ensure that students are ready to move on to higher education, to move on to the workforce, and making sure that we're, making sure that we're moving them above and beyond just STAR, but preparing them for those AP college courses as well.
And if they're not CCMR-ready and they go to a university, what will happen?
If they're not CCMR-ready, they'll end up taking remedial courses until they actually pass. And so, they're basically, they're wasting money, taking those courses that are not gonna count towards their degree plan.
So, they're non-credit-bearing courses?
Exactly.
That they cannot proceed to credit-bearing courses if they're not CCMR-ready? And they cannot go to a four-year university either. They need to start at a two-year university because they are not CCMR-ready. So, it is imminent that we get them academically prepared.
Are there any questions?
On the pending data, when do you anticipate it coming?
So, it's a good question you ask. CCMR data technically is one year behind. So, we will actually get our 2023 data in October, right? That has to do with the STAR testing and everything and our accountability goals, but that will be based on our 2022 graduates. So, it's one year behind.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, now we move on to Agenda Number Nine, Consent Agenda under Academic Services, 9.1, Request Approval for Agreement Between SAMNUCISD, Region 1, ESC, the Texas Curriculum Management Corporation for the 2023-2024 School Year. Ms. Servián? Okay, my apologies. It's under Consent Agenda under Academic Services. In order to promote efficient meeting, the board must act upon any or one item at or single vote through the use of Consent Agenda. The consent items on the agenda shall be marked with an asterisk. Consent are items on which the board discussion and anticipated and/or which the superintendent recommends approval. Prior to the time which approval of the Consent Agenda is had, at the request of any member of the Board of Trustees, any item on the Consent Agenda shall be removed and given additional consideration. Okay, under 9.1, once again, Request Approval for Agreement Between SAMNUCISD and Region 1, ESC, Texas Curriculum Management Corporation for the 2023-2024 School Year. Question? Consent? 9.2, Request Approval for the inter-local agreement between SAMNUCISD and Region 1, ESC Driving Initiative Program. Question? Consent? 9.3, Request Approval for the Clinical Education Affiliation Agreement between SAMNUCISD and Sun Value Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center. Question? Consent? Request Approval for the grant from the project Lead the Way for Implementation in Biomedical Sciences. Question? Consent? 9.5, Request Approval for the Extension of the Proposal of the Social Service Case Management Program. Question? Consent? Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is Consent Agenda under Business and Finance. 10.1, Request Approval of the Cash Account Report for 10.1, request, request approval of the cash account report for, for April 2023. Question? Consent? 10.2, request approval for the, for the comparison and revenue for the expenditures for the budget of April 2023. Question? Consent? 10.3, request approval for the tax collection report for April 2023. Question? Consent? 10.4, request approval for the check disbursements for April 2023. Question? Consent? 10.4, request approval for the option to extend the contract for, for student slash academic insurance for one, one-year period. Question? Consent? 10.6, request approval for the option to extend bid proposal for work compensation insurance for one additional year. Question? Consent? Now, let's move on to item, Agenda Item Number 11, Consent Agenda Administration. 1.1, 11.1, request approval for revisions on the 2022-2020 Compensation Plan. Question? Consent? 11.2, request approval, the memorandum of understanding between SAMNUCISD and Cameron County Sheriff's Office. Question? Consent? 11.3, request approval for Amendment One on the Data Sharing Agreement between SAMNUCISD and Teach America Incorporated. Question? Consent? 11.4, request approval of board minutes. Question? Okay, consent. Can I have a motion to approve under Consent Agenda from 9.1 through 11.4?
Some move.
I got a motion by Mr. Silva.
Second.
A second by Mr. Frutoso. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to 12, Action Agenda. 12.1, Discussion and Consideration of Proposal Approval of Gifts and Bequests for the 2022-2023 school year. Ms. Servian?
Yes, sir. I recommend the board approve the gifts bequest for 2223 school year as presented.
Do you have a motion?
Some move.
I got a motion by Mr. Medrano. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I got a second by, by Mr. Corona. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. 12.2, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Approval Regarding the Purchase Over $25,000. Ms. Servian?
Yes, sir. I recommend the board approve purchases over $25,000 as presented.
I got a motion by Mr. Corona. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Silva. All in favor, please raise your right hand. 7-0. Motion carries. Thank you. 2.3, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Approval of Budget. Ms. Servian?
Yes, I recommend the board approve budget amendments for the 2223 school year as presented.
Yes, can I have a motion?
Motion.
I got a, I got a motion by Mr. Silva. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Medrano. All in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0. Motion carries. Yes, yes, ma'am. So, Agenda Item. Okay, item 12.4, Discussion and Consideration and, and possible approval of selecting the insurance consultant for RFP-0323-IceHB Insurance Consultant for Employment Services. I would like to take that to executive session. Okay? Move that to executive session. Okay, move on to item 13, Agenda Item 13, Closed Meeting. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may, may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071 for the purpose in private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subject matters authorized by law. Section 551.074 for the purpose in consideration of appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of any public officer or employees to, or to, to, to hear any complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Or section 551.078, certain board members deliberations. Okay, 3.1, 13.1, employment resignations and retirements, and 13.2, Superintendent Report. At this time, we'll go in, we'll, at this time, we're going to executive session at exactly 7:51 PM. Okay, reconvening to open session at exactly 9:40 PM. Okay, back to item 12.4, Discussion, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action for Selective Insurance Consultant for RFP-03023-IceHB Insurance Consultant for Employee Health, Health Benefits.
Based on the criteria and the score sheet, I motion to approve Smith and Associates for, as the insurance consultant for RFP-0323-IceHB Insurance Consultant for Employee Health Benefits. Is there a second?
Second.
I got a, I got, I got a motion on the floor by, by Dr. Cruz. I got a second by Mario Silva. All in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0. Motion carries. Thank you. 13.1, employment resignations and retirements. Ms. Servian?
We didn't have any in the back.
Okay, okay. So, I guess at this moment, adjournment? I need a motion or adjourn?
Some move. Second.
I got a motion. I got a motion by Alex Reina. I got a second by Dr. Ariel Cruz. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, 7-0 vote. We adjourned at exactly 9:41 PM. Thank you.